At this seven o'clock, we will call the regular village board meeting to order. I would rise to say the pledge, please.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moravka.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the January 8th, 2018 regular village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Moravka.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Ms. Moravka.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
And approval or corrections to the minutes of the January 16th, 2018 special board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Yeah. On the adjournment, last paragraph. The list of attendees I don't think is correct.
Oh. Oh my God. So that should be...
I will correct you, Moravka.
So we're changing Hupkey to Moravka. With that correction, a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll motion that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Moravka.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Ms. Moravka. Yes. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
And Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 12/16/17, the amount of $46,083.93. Accounts payable, general fund, $65,026.54. Motor fuel tax fund, $1,360.63. Water and sewer fund, $25,763.59. Giving a total of all funds, $92,357.6. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hack, seconded by trustee Jones to pay the bills and the payroll.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Ms. Moravka.
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? Reports of committees, police chief's report.
I'm just letting you know I'm alive, so I thought to be at all the sighting.
Good to see ya.
Send my photo for a stand-up, you know, a masked person, but no, I'm alive.
How about a cutout?
Engineers' report.
The I got bid opening for the Rathgee Rotary Construction Project, the second phase of it was last Friday. The villages received very competitive bids. They came in lower than expected. P.T. Pharaoh Construction Company was the low bidder, about 1.62 million. And the next bid was right there, 1.69 million. There were two, two a little bit higher, but our funding budget at the 80-20 split is at 2.1 million, so it's good that they came in significantly lower.
Good.
The January letting, a lot of times has competitive bidding, just in the winter.
The additional monies that we projected for, is that strictly for the road construction or is that the entire road construction, landscaping, sidewalks, trees, everything?
It's for the construction of the entire project.
The entire project.
Mm-hmm.
So does that mean we could embellish more if the state's paying it and make it a little more deluxe because we got half a million dollars to work with?
You might be able to, however, they have to approve everything. And if, if they don't approve it during the design phase, a lot of times they will not allow it just because of environmental or certain things, but we can look at, see if there are extras we can add.
Maybe next time you come up with a list of things that are...
Going in.
A wish list, you know? I'm thinking of things like trees and sidewalks and landscaping and barrier curbs and I don't know what all is involved, but...
Significant design changes like barrier curves, that they're not going to allow that because that's too big of a design change. But there might be some landscaping or something like that we can do.
How come barrier curves weren't figured into the initial bid?
Were you, were you talking about barrier curves for the median or for the actual...
For the sides.
That's already included.
It's already figured in.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I'm not a big fan of median barrier curves.
People tend to get those, I guess.
Or lighting, I don't know, is lighting included in that?
There is not lighting included.
Could it be?
Not at this point, no.
We'll come up with a list of the things that are out there that we can look it over. If the state's giving us some money, it might be better. Can it be used anywhere else? Can you...
I'm not worried.
Anything else, Troy?
That's all.
So I see still, we got utility work still going on for the corning?
Yeah. I know you mentioned to me about there was a little bit of disturbance at the one in between main and corning. And AT&amp;T, I believe, today, they called me because after we talked about that, they said they cleaned up some of that dirt that was left, left out and being pushed towards landscaping.
Okay.
So they showed up today.
Okay, good.
They did some restoration work, did they?
Yeah. They're trying to, just trying to push them to make it look a little nicer and just clean it up.
Yeah, we have P.T. Pharaoh do work before us. Yeah, they've done, they've done work in the village before. P.T. Pharaoh, Kevin? They've done several different projects.
It's been a few years, the last couple have been...
I've had them a couple of times, you're pretty good.
Anything with the guardrail 57?
They still haven't done it? I haven't heard since.
Nope.
They said they put a work order in, but I haven't seen...
Yeah, that's the last I heard of the work order.
Well, of course, it snowed right after that.
They didn't have a definitive date for the work order, so I'll, I'll check with them again.
Okay.
Thank you, Troy.
Yep.
All right, no old business, so move on to new business. Item A, a motion to refer preliminary plan of subdivision for property at 451 and 471 Southwest Street to Plan Commission. And we have Mr. Bill Borgo with us.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Been, believe it or not, three years since I've come in front of you with my first project. And that was back in 2015, a 130 Orchard. That did so well that I then come before you in 2016 for the project at 523 Howard. Last year, we purchased 30 units, existing buildings in Peatone. And we are investing somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 per unit, per unit in repairs. With the purchase of all those apartment buildings, I also come into acquisition of some lots over on Southwest Street. Tonight, what I'd like to do is show you the progression. I'm trying to clean up the sins of the past. We have, these three lots were originally planted in 1870. There was an apartment building built on one end, spread kind of over into one of the other lots in the late '60s, I'm guessing it was built. So what I'm going to do is I want to re-subdivide these three lots so they're into two lots so that they are just easier for all of us to work with and deal with in the future. What I'm going to hand out, first thing is kind of a progression because it's kind of messy about how things have progressed. I stapled them together, but you have some of the materials, but I'm just going to give you a larger set so that you can kind of go along with me and they're in the proper order. So I ask that you don't tear them apart because if you do, it's going to get confusing again, all righty? We have been in touch, of course, with the village's engineer. We've been working on all of this side. My engineering firm, MG2A, has been in, we've been exchanging frantic emails back and forth and new plats and survey. And we have basically, I believe, able to comply with everything that you've requested, if I remember correctly. There might be a couple of little things, but overall, I'm sorry. So we're very, we're moving forward on this in a timely manner. If you look at the first page, these are the original dimensions of the original three lots back in the 1870s. If you go to the next page, this one represents the way that the property and existing apartment building is right now. You'll see that the middle lot is significantly smaller because the lot to the south of it, the building stretches over and rolls over onto the southern boundary of that center green lot. So what we're doing is we are combining that yellow lot and that green lot together and then creating two lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2. And you'll see that in the third rendering. You'll see that we now will have two lots, very specific boundaries. And this will then allow us to keep our six-unit building and the parking and everything that's necessary and then create a buildable lot to the north that we are going to be approaching you to build a seven-unit apartment building on a newly configured lot. I'm not even going to try to go for an eight unit, I don't believe. I think that would be putting too much building on the lot. So what I'm proposing on the final, if you look at it, it's a seven-unit building. And a seven-unit building is kind of odd and unusual, but what I've done is I've taken, I know if any of you have seen my building at 523 Howard, have any of you seen that one? What I'm doing is I'm taking that exact floor plan and I am removing one of the apartments from that eight-unit building. And we are putting four garage bays where one of the apartments would be. And we know the building has to be completely sprinkled, we're all fully aware of that. I am going to, in the garage, I've already reached out to a company that specializes in making sure that sprinkler systems do not freeze in garages and other of those situations. The front of this is just to kind of give you an idea of what the building is going to look like and how much green space, asphalt and things of that nature. The next page is to give you an idea of the building, what it's going to look like. This is the west side, this is going to face West Street or Southwest Street. And then if you look at the next page, that would be the south side of the building. And it's exactly the same building that you've seen at 523 Howard. The colors, they, these are not locked-in colors, these are just to try to give you an idea of what it might look like if I chose this. I have built this building in Manhattan with this color scheme and it looks really nice and I have photos of that. But we can make any color you want. I could build it the same colors as 130 Orchard and the 1 and 523 Howard if you wish. It's not an issue. The other, the last page of this packet then is to give you, I've already got the architects, it's all been drawn and ready to go. And you'll see that there are three units on the first floor and four garage bays on the first floor. And then the second floor is basically a repeat of what you see here, except one of these units sits above the garages. And I've done this, apartments above garages, I've done this in a five-unit building in Manhattan and I've done a nine-unit building in Plainfield where we have garage bays and then an owner's unit or an apartment above it. And it works very well. It's highly desirable and it'll give us a real, it gives good street presence. The other benefit of having these garages is that it takes, it takes cars off of the parking lots, so it puts them behind garage doors. So it gives you a better appearance and it doesn't show as much cars and that stuff in the parking lots. So it's a very, very desirable thing. And all the, all the areas that I've offered garages, people love them. And I will tell you that this floor plan that I've prepared, I proposed, it's a knockout. Everybody that comes, when they respond to all my ads and they see that two-bedroom, one-bath, 1,050 square feet, stove, refrigerator, dishwasher and washer and dryers in unit, they look. And I want to offer these people more of this in this town. You guys have been fantastic to work with. We have, to date, without this building, we have 54 units in your town, which is probably close to $4.5 million. So we enjoy working with you. We have solved many problems and some of these buildings that we've been buying up, they've had some slightly less than desirable lifestyles, let's just put it that way. And with the village's help, we've been able to clean a lot of those out and turn them around. Since we bought these buildings, these 30 units, well, 22 we purchased in March of 17, eight more we purchased in October of 17. The first 22 units, we've been repairing them, we've put over $10,000 in repairs and probably more than half of them already. Within the next couple of months, we hope to get the rest of them done. And they've been renting out very well, good class and clientele, good people. So what I'm looking forward tonight is your approval to make a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission to allow me to re-subdivide this land. And at that same meeting, I'm going to be asking for some variances. We already know what some of the variances are going to be, lot size, just like the last two projects do not meet today's current codes, but you've worked with me in the past on two previous projects, this one should be no different. So that's, that's where we're at. I'm hoping you will consider this and I would be more than happy to answer any of your questions. Yes.
The green space, is that the existing apartment building now?
No, the, the, the pink is the existing building.
And so you'd have two more lots north?
So, yeah, we're combining those two lots in the north for one buildable lot.
Okay.
Because the, the existing apartment building encroaches several feet into that, that middle lot. So they just kind of did it and I'm cleaning it up.
And what's going to face West Street will be the garage doors?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I like your buildings, I like the way they look.
Thank you.
But I'll be honest with you, I don't like those outside entries.
People love them.
I'm not talking about the people, I'm talking about the community. I mean, like we talk about a motel and we don't want the outside entry.
Well, I'm telling you...
I'm sure, I'm sure people probably do, but in the long haul, those can turn into a mess. People storing stuff out there and...
They can if you don't have strong management. And the fact of the matter is I've been building this type of product since 2000 and as long as I'm strong on it, we've had no issues. And the reason they're good is that it'll, it allows you to offer people maximum amount of square footage, livable space. If you put in hallways, you lose livable square footage and people would much rather have the livable, usable square footage. And the other thing they like is they like to have their own independent door in and out of their apartment. It's a huge deal. And I wouldn't even, if, if, if push come to shove, if you push me to build an apartment building with the hallways, I won't do it. I'll let it sit. I can't, I cannot justify it. The maintenance costs alone are crazy. You've got to heat it, you've got to paint it, you've got to clean it. It's a mess. And I've built, been building apartments since 1989 and every time I build something, I'm experimenting. And hallways, no one wants them. People don't want them, no one wants them. They want livable square footage. And that's how I've been able to offer this unit at the price that I do, is because I've taken all those common areas, hallways, and turned it into livable space and that's how I'm able to offer washers and dryers. And hotels are different animal, that's not, that's not the same thing.
Even apartment buildings I see going up, I don't see a lot of outside entries. And you talk about management, so long as you're at the helm, but these buildings will last a lot longer than you will.
Well, that is very true, but you have to understand that the qual, that whoever, whoever buys these apartments from me, they're going to be paying top, top dollar because I'm generating top rental numbers. And so that means they can't afford to be slum lords because they'll lose their butt financially. They have to keep on maintaining the quality of the people or they won't get the rents and if they don't get the rents, they won't make a profit. So that's the difference. And yes, you're right, big, huge corporations building three, four-story buildings, yeah, that's a whole different business model. That's a whole different density, whole different construction style, different animal altogether.
What do you figure the cost per square foot at that building like this?
I think I, these are probably around, hmm, oh, let me think what the last one was. You're probably down, probably around $100 a square foot, somewhere in that area.
So it's about a $750,000 building?
You bet. All day long.
Hey, still don't like outside entrances.
I, well, I understand that everyone has their opinion.
Anybody else have any, any other questions? So this does have to go to planning and zoning?
Right, yes. And the parking, do you know what our parking regulations are?
Two per unit.
Two per unit.
Two per unit. And that's why the garages are there. The garages aren't there because of a lifestyle change. The garages are there because he needed four more spaces and that's why he took the unit out from underneath it.
No, I, no, I...
The other problem that I see on this is the size of the building on the lot. I think we're putting a lot of building on a very small lot. And that's what one of the variances are, is this, the trailer's our final number on there, it's quite a bit down from our, our normal 30,000 square foot, right?
Minimum lot size for a seven-unit dwelling is less than required, so it's 5,000 square foot per dwelling, so yeah, it'd be 35,000.
This is 17, so...
It's 17, yeah.
But this is no different situation in my...
I think we're setting a dangerous precedent by doing that.
Well, this is the last...
You're the last, maybe the last for you, Bill, but I'm saying the next guy walking in the door.
And again, that's why, and that's why this is going to planning and zoning, I mean, we're going through the process.
But this is an existing unit, not, I'm not trying to, if I was coming in and buying raw land, I would never try to do this because that's going against grain. I'm trying to take old lots, zoned with different items, different things, different densities. There's a six-unit on there right now and if you calculate the square footage of the lot where my six-unit is, this seven-unit is less, more square footage on the lot per unit than what the six-unit is. And by having this garage, I'm pulling cars and putting them inside. So, but you have to do something, you can't make money if I, if I make it much smaller. I've already, not even tried to come in and push an eight. I'm, I'm realistic. And that's what I've come in before is for an eight and I'm not even trying for that here, I'm not even close to it.
What's the setback from those duplexes?
It meets a requirement, it's 15p. It's, it's a site, the only require, only thing I'm missing is my rear setback. If you look, and the rear setback, because it's a weird triangular shape, a small corner of the building, probably about a three-foot by four-foot corner of the building, may approach in my 30-foot setback. So that's one of the things I'm going to be coming for, asking for variance on that and simply because it's a weird sized lot. I couldn't position the building any other way, or even a smaller building, any other way than to do that. It just doesn't make any sense.
Are you going to use a common drive with that other building?
We've got a separate, we've got a separate amount of area pulled off to the, to the north of the existing driveway.
So there'll be two driveways, basically?
Yes.
Other questions? All right, well, like I said, this has to go through, you know, to planning and zoning, so what we're looking for tonight is a motion to refer the preliminary plan of the subdivision for property at 451 and 471 Southwest Street to the planning commission for their consideration.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, seconded by trustee March.
Ms. Moravka.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
And Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Borgo.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have anything?
You too.
You need me to stay?
Nope, I don't think so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. I have a resolution, a resolution requesting assignment of the address of 555 Pearl Drive for the new fire station. Chief, how are you? Anything on that?
This was kind of surprised to me that this was happening tonight, so...
Yeah, we have a phone call, they're getting...
Okay. I think, okay, I apologize for that. They just were requiring us to assign, you know, an address to, to the, to the lot.
Yeah, that's what they wanted. 911 wanted a, 911 requested a, a resolution, so that's why we did that. Easy to remember. And 911 also requested a number in the fives because of where they're at, where it's located. They already have numbers in the fives.
We're trying to figure that out.
Figure that out with 911. I, I called them and I asked them and I asked them for nines and they wanted fives, so...
711 solves governors, it's the dealership, so it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, but...
And the post office with no help, so...
I'm sure. That's fine.
Okay. All right, I apologize for, we're just trying to keep things, I was trying to keep things moving forward so there's no holdup on, on your...
Appreciate it. We actually came in at a good time because we're trying to get the tax exemption stuff done.
Right.
So they, they assigned the, the number?
They didn't assign a number, they just said they wanted it in the fives. I went 555, just to try to make it as easy as possible because you're at the top of the street and there's nothing going to go on the left side of the street or the right side as you're coming in. The tiny development will go on that side, it'll be the odd side.
Yeah. So they just think that would be a 600 number.
I'm not arguing with anyone, I'm not arguing with anyone. You can make the number anything you want, we'll give it to 911. Anyway.
Part of that's also through the Will County GIS system, so that's where they get a lot of the numbering ideas from. 911 doesn't make up a number. They try to, but they don't.
This would be resolution number 17-R09, a resolution requesting assignment of the address of 555 Pearl Drive for the new fire station.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Moravka.
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
And Mr. Hack. Yes.
All right, item C, ordinance, an ordinance amending title, 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 113 Amusements, Entertainment and Gathering of the Village of Peatone Code Regarding Raffles. In your packet, you have a copy of a ordinance which has been drafted by legal. I've been talking with Mike Morris for the last couple of months about this. We have Mr. Belansky, Rick, you want to step up?
Rick Bolnarski. I'm with the Legion Post 392 and what we're attempting to accomplish is the startup of the Queen of Hearts Lottery. As you know, this is very successful in Morris. Tonight, they have a $1.1 million jackpot. I would like to see that here, but if we could just make some money, it'd be great. When Morris was at 1.5 million, they ran into some legal issues and the town had to pass an ordinance that would approve the lottery or the raffle. And that's what we're attempting to do and that's, that's what you have in front of you.
So I've been going back and forth with Rick a little bit since we got the draft of the ordinance, I had sent it to him and he had a few concerns. I think I've addressed most of those with legal before the meeting.
Okay.
Um, you know, as far as like the Queen of Hearts raffle, that's, that's one raffle.
Okay.
You know, for the year. As far as the bartenders issuing the tickets, that's not a problem, that's your thing. Just displaying the license in the Legion is fine, doesn't have to be carried, that's only if they were out on the street.
Selling tickets.
Selling tickets. If they're being sold there, as long as it's posted there, we're good. I'm going to skip that one for a second. As far as the request to waive, the waiver for... As far as the request to waive, the waiver provision, you know, it's the.
Bond.
The bond, yes. That would be under, really out of there.
136B.
136B. Rick had asked if we would consider waiving that, but I.
No, I wouldn't recommend that. I, I think you should have the bond.
Okay.
It won't be that expensive.
And I have to go with legal on that one. And then 137A, the last sentence you had a concern with, the person who accounts for grocery receipts and expenses from the operation of raffles shall not be the same person who accounts for other revenues of the organization.
Yes. We can delete that if you, if you wish. It's a safety measure. I don't know if, what problem it creates for you. Well, we have such a small organization, okay? And it's, it's difficult to find the correct people that have the skill set that we need to do this. So if you would delete that, that would be excellent. That's okay. It can be deleted. Thank you. It is, you know.
So if you're going to draw a line through that last sentence in 133, 137 records. And then I think the, the big question is the dollar amounts that are plugged in here as far as, let's see, we're at 113, 135, items A and B. So in the ordinance there's raffle limits. So the aggregate retail value of all prizes or merchandise awarded by a licensee in a single calendar year shall not exceed $200,000. And the maximum retail value of each prize awarded by a licensee in a single progressive raffle shall not exceed 100,000. And I know that Rick had some concern with those numbers.
I don't think anyone envisioned 1.5 million dollars in a raffle, okay? Same exact raffle. It's also very difficult to project how much each raffle will be. What we have is a, a deck of 54 cards. It's a regular card deck plus two jokers. Once a week, we have a raffle and a drawing. And if the person whose ticket was, was called picks the Queen of Hearts, they win the jackpot. Simple as that. If they don't, it's progressive. We take the money that, that we gathered that week. Our plan is to take half of that, put it back in the pot. The other half is to go to the Legion to fund the continuance of the, of the lottery plus take care of the other things we do. So I recommended, I just looked at this and I thought, you know, a hundred thousand dollars and 200,000 dollars will cover it. It would never cover Morris. So I picked a number that I thought was realistic. It's 2 million dollars. I don't think that'll ever be reached. But it gives us the latitude to, to not stop a lottery that's progressing very well.
So the question or the concern that chief and I were talking about earlier tonight is if we get to that million-dollar mark, kind of the chaos, you know, that ensues upon that. And, you know, is there any kind of a plan in place because, you know, we as a village or we as a police department are going to be able to crowd control?
Yes.
You know?
We have a plan. And actually, thanks to Wilmington, whose streets were, were pretty much shut down during their lottery boom. The first lottery rules called for the person to be present at the drawing, okay? And they, they had crowd control, they had, fire department was concerned about the, the building being overrun with people. And they modified their rules to allow people to purchase tickets in advance, to write the number down of the, the card they want turned. And they don't have to be present. And it immediately dropped the amount of people that were rushing in to do this. That's what we're doing. And we'll be selling tickets all week, not just on, on the day of, of the lottery. We understand if it gets up there, we may have some parking issues, but there's a lot of space along the railroad tracks. And, and we don't think it'll be too of your problem.
What's Morris's limit?
Pardon me?
What's Morris's limit now?
On?
The lottery.
The dollar amount. Oh, the dollar amount is, I don't know that they have a limit. But I can't say, you know, they're up to 1.5 million.
What's Wilmington's?
Wilmington is, is shut down because it burned down. New Lenox is at 7,100. Aroma Park is at, I think, 3,700. It all depends on when the cards turn.
No, no. What's the limit that they can allow?
The highest.
The highest?
The highest? I don't know.
Do you know what Manantino's is?
No.
They cut their, I don't know what it is, but they did cut it back because they had the same fiasco that Wilmington had. They couldn't get a, they couldn't get an ambulance or a fire truck or a police car down the street that last night. So they cut their way back. In fact, they told them they had to, they had to have a winner that night.
Really?
Yeah.
We try to do things to bring people to town.
Yeah, it does.
I mean, it exposes them, housing market, it exposes them, businesses and everything. I mean, and I know there are issues with crowds of people, but my gosh, to have that problem would almost be a good thing once in a while, you know? I personally give them the, what they're looking for and we'll deal with the issues if they come along. If you're willing to work with us, you know, obviously.
Who, who else would be covered under this? I've never heard of this before, I apologize.
King of Manhattan.
Well, for the, for the, chief, for the Queen of Hearts, this has to be done by an organization such as.
Well, you have a wide, you have a wide venue who could do it by your ordinance. Because it has organizations, so technically anybody that has an ordinance and can get the gaming permit could run a Queen of Hearts tournament the way you're, or a raffle.
But they have to have the, they have to have the gaming permit from the state.
Yeah, that's correct.
Could be limited to what?
You can't limit the state to one.
No.
I mean, they have to, they, it says they have to be in existence for five years. So I mean, it's not like somebody.
Right. I don't think we're going to see a great influx of people trying to run a, you know, trying to run a raffle personally, but.
Well, this, you know, we, we talk about the raffle. That includes the Ed Fund raffle, that includes post-prom raffles, that includes just in our community, see what else we have.
Church, any of the churches?
Well, technically the church would fall into this. And.
The school.
Any, any raffle, because that's what got Morris in trouble, they didn't have a raffle permit. They didn't have an ordinance that gave the issue with raffles. The concern I have is I am not, and I have the fire here also, I am not consuming time playing raffle police with traffic and, and the rules of the game should be accompanied by the permit. And I think we have to edit our permit process because we don't have so many, what kind of organization? I've seen other agencies have a permit for these raffles. And because there's so many agencies like churches and schools and all these can fall into there, labor can also apply for a raffle license. And the, the raffles like the Queen of Hearts, I'd like to see what the Legion proposes on the rules of the game. When it's going to be held, how it's going to accomplish, because what day they're planning on doing this? Because I'm not just going, not going to have it on the, it has to go with the application.
Right.
When the drawing is, the time of the drawing. But I would not, and I, you know, shut down streets and have that chaos that could happen in Manantino. Because the true fact is, the people making the money are the people serving the beer. They had outside beer venues, they shut down streets, and it turns into chaos. And then people can't get down to other venues because they can't park in the whole area. Because Manantino, we all know what that turned into when it got, before Morris became the popular site. And Morris has her problems too with the parking, people lining up and trying to buy tickets during those days. So I'd like to see what they're, you know, so they understand that, that, you know, we're not going to shut down our streets. Because you do it for one, you're going to get the same issue with everybody. Don't want special treatments, so get these raffle, progressive raffles increasing. It's not just the Legion, Queen of Hearts, it could fall into other people that are eligible to apply for raffles. Again, I mean.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? How many, how often is this raffle going to be conducted? How does this work? Okay, so. I don't understand. Is it once a month, once a week?
Every week.
So we, we have a board. Weekly? We have a board that has the 54 cards on it. Yeah. And it's posted where everyone can see. People buy raffle tickets during the week or the day of. The lottery will, lottery drawing will be on Thursday nights at 7:00. Every Thursday? Every Thursday. Okay, we need to make a change over here on this panel too. And then it's, it's the luck of the draw. We're investing a thousand dollars into the first drawing to make the pot desirable. If somebody picks the queen, first time out, well, we're out a thousand dollars. But if, if it rolls and it progresses, we'll be able to recoup our money and, and make some profit.
All right. I mean, there's a lot of room for if it rolls, if it rolls or rolls. And I'm sure they'd love to have a hundred thousand dollar pot because people will.
And I think, I guess the, the discussion right now is, do we want to limit that pot? I mean, that's, that's the discussion. Or do you just?
It's limited to 100,000.
Well, right now.
Yeah, right.
Correct. 100,000 per single raffle, 200,000 for the year.
Right.
So that means they could do.
Could we make it to where if it got to a certain point that they had to sell tickets? And you could only sell like 200 tickets or 500 tickets? And only those 500 tickets?
I don't think so.
I don't know that the Queen of Hearts can be played that way. There's other raffles you could do that with.
Yeah.
But there, because there's no set dollar amount, based, it's all based on raffle ticket sales at that point in time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to, for them to say, you know.
Well, once it gets to like 500,000 or whatever, now you've got to sell tickets.
That's why you set a dollar limit, yeah.
Does it go up exponentially? A thousand, 2,000, 4,000, 8,000?
No. Based on sales.
So for example, let's say we have a, a good week of ticket selling. We may, may bring in 500 dollars. We take that 500 dollars and we take half of it and we put it back into the progressive part of pot. So if there is no winner, it'll be 1,250 dollars for your next pot. That's how.
So people are paying.
And what happened to the other half of the money? Where does it go?
Other half of the money is for Legion use to rebuild our fund. Okay, we already got a thousand dollars in there. We need to recoup that money. We've, we've purchased the raffle tickets, which are not expensive. We purchased a drum to turn the tickets around. We've purchased the boards. So there is some expenses, it's, it's minor. The other money, as you know, we're dedicated to, to veterans and, and that will go to charity. It'll go to rebuilding the, the Legion Hall. It's in bad shape. I mean, that's where we see it coming.
Yeah, in fact, you just asked a question.
Sure.
The drum of tickets.
Yes.
Because I'm not a, I've, I've heard of the game, I haven't played it.
Played it either.
Have to get my secret identity. When I purchase a ticket, does my name stay in the drum until the raffle is over?
Yes.
Yes, so.
No, excuse me. I have to clarify that. Your, your ticket is valid until the drawing.
Only that day.
So it's good for, for that day only, okay?
For that drawing.
For that one drawing.
So then the drum gets empty.
Yep.
Drum gets thrown away and then you start.
Tickets, only tickets all over.
Yes.
Okay.
How is this beneficial to the village?
It's, well, it's beneficial to the village in the way that the Legion's beneficial to the village. Legion does a lot of positive community.
Yes.
Stuff, especially with kids at Christmas, with the veterans year round.
So it's a fundraiser for the.
It's a, it's a fundraiser for the Legion so they can continue to do what they do, which benefits the village.
Okay, but other groups besides the Legion could theoretically do this because now we're licensed.
Right. Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of raffles that go on throughout the course of the year. The village has never had a raffle ordinance. These raffles have happened, you know, the village doesn't have anything to do with it, the village doesn't have, doesn't give a license out for it. The only reason that this is being looked at now is because the Legion wants to do the Queen of Hearts. And other communities, other Legions that have done the Queen of Hearts and they haven't had a village raffle ordinance have had to stop, they've had to, you know, create, they had the village to create one. So they were trying, they've approached us, Dave Drawley, the commander of the Legion approached chief and I a couple of months ago and asked if we would consider adopting a raffle ordinance, which would enable them to do the Queen of Hearts.
And it would require all the other raffles in town to get the same.
They did the Queen of Hearts.
To get a like, well, no. But you said, it's a raffle. I mean, and the licenses aren't, it isn't expensive.
$15 for a single raffle.
But there's a lot of requirements they have to meet, right?
Yeah.
They have to be an organization for five years.
Yeah, right.
They have to have a bond, they have to have a gaming license.
Well, like, my dad fund that does raffles, they do not have to have a gaming license with the state.
They do not?
They do not.
So with Cash Bash, because it's funding the school and it's been an organization for five years, do they now have to get a raffle permit?
I would say probably yes.
Do they have to get that, that other funding thing or whatever?
The bond.
Yes.
I could say probably yes. But again, those aren't.
See, the surety bond, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
The surety bond protects the people that are holding the money. Because somebody.
And she might already have that.
The school would.
The school.
Yeah, okay.
It already happened.
Because what can happen is, and it's happened in, in rap, in the events of raising funds, when they go to the money drawer.
It's gone.
Some of the money can be absolved and people that are in control of it may not know entirely what's going on. And that protects people holding the money that run the event.
Right.
I mean, they want to have a surety bond that says, you know, you know, I'm, I have that because they're the ones that are accountable for the money. So they have to be accountable for every cent and, you know, I don't doubt that they'll have that in place.
Right. Yeah, and chief, the, just like you're bonded, you guys are bonded, at the school, they're bonded too. They have blanket bonds from the school. So another public entity would have it already.
And if they, I mean, if they got up to a, and they'd be more than happy, believe me, if they could get up to a hundred thousand dollar payoff. Because it would take some time to build up unless, and the other avenue is, the raffle for this game really got popular about three or four years ago. But see, and some of the people from Legion were talking about it, but they never pushed a little further uphill to get into it. Now it's the game of the day. Because the Legions are definitely not-for-profit. And they are all having associated costs for their organization because they have so many payouts. I mean, they're doing the veterans, they do the children's gifts. I mean, they're, they're handing out and they're not getting it in bar business.
Correct.
They're not getting the payback.
Right.
And so I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. As long as the rules and regulations, they seem to be in place. I mean, if they get up to a million dollars and we have to, you know, people act crazy, I'm sure the Legion will work with us to control it. Because they couldn't hold all the people in the room.
We couldn't.
Yeah, they would be, and they have to have it there. Yeah, they would be, and they have to have it there. They can't move it anyplace else. Because that's what the regulations say.
Rick, when are you looking to start this, the first one?
End of February, early March.
I was just thinking the table, so we could revise everything, but...
Well, I think the one revision we've got, and you had something, Jim?
Well, I'm concerned about the amounts here.
Right.
I mean, I... I don't, I really, did you talk to Mike about this?
Mike had called, Mike had called me, he put those amounts in. And I said, we've got to start someplace, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So... I have to ask the question, do we need to have an amount in here?
I, well, I would say we want some control over this, as the chief was saying. You know, you want to have some limitation here. I mean, like you say, we've got to roll over, we're going to have a million dollar lot.
So, then, when it would get to that...
And I'm not sure, I have to look at the statute to see if there's any limitation there.
Okay, but when they would get to that amount then, and they still didn't have a winner, would they have to keep picking then until they had a winner for that jackpot, right?
If there was a limit on it.
If there was a limit on it, yes.
Yeah, if they got to a certain amount of money, they'd have to pull till they have a winner.
Okay.
But see, by his rules, and this could be even more difficult, if the winner does have to be present, you may not know who the winner is at the time of the drawing.
Yes, you would.
The name would be on it.
The only name on it's... Oh, you're right. See, I assure you, I don't sell our tickets.
The only thing I'm confused, who pulls the card then at that point?
Who pulls the...
If they're not there.
There's a number pulled, who pulls the ticket, the card off the board to see if it's Queen of Hearts or...
So, on the back of the raffle ticket, there's a number.
Okay.
It matches a number on the board.
Gotcha, okay.
We cut it open.
Okay.
And if they're a winner, you know, we announce that we have a winner.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
Because they specify the number.
The only one I've ever been to is where you have to be there, that's why I was wondering, you know?
And the boards are all self-contained?
The boards are sealed, laminated and sealed, so you can't play with them.
I'm envisioning that. The raffle ticket itself costs $250?
Just let it go. Can we get the Legion to agree to offset some of the additional costs? If you get a million dollar raffle, you're going to sell a lot of tickets. You have all these people. Maybe Bill needs three more people on hand or something. Could the Legion share in that cost when you hit a big number like that?
Well, I can't speak for the commander, okay? But I would think that we would do anything that's reasonable.
I would say that if it got to be where it's causing concern for issues, traffic, and we use the term safety...
Over time, yeah.
Then we would have to meet with the organizers and whether they have to fund the police and fire to be present to assist us, yeah, use the term fund.
Right.
Because it's not going to be free.
If you get a million dollar raffle, you can afford to.
Yes, we can.
Right.
So, I mean, if it got to the point, you know...
So, yeah, I mean, it's like, we're hiring you.
Yeah, and the evaluation of, you know, it's crawl, walk, slow before you run. As it goes, there may be some...
And to get to that point, I mean, it's going to take a lot of...
Take a lot of selling by them.
Yeah.
You know?
So, I guess really the question is, you know, what numbers, what numbers we want to plug into the ordinance? I mean, that's really kind of, I think, to the point where we're at now. I mean, do you want to do the 100, 200, do you want to go 500, a million? Do you want, you know, I mean, you've got to come up with numbers.
I think the nice thing about an ordinance is even if we start a law and it gets popular enough, you can always raise it.
Right.
Yeah, we can always, I was going to say that, I mean, at any time, we can amend the ordinance.
And like I said, and I'm just throwing a number out because like Mr. Mayor indicated, if I got up to this time, it's just to say 250. I mean, they're going to be fair and I'm seeing, and the thing about them, they're going to need a rest. They started getting those 250 pots, I meant with the zeros added. You know, it's, these guys are going to work their butts off to sell when it gets that big. Because it's not just, the bartender can't handle that ground. Part one.
That's a good problem to have.
That's a good problem to have. So, if you made it 250 and 500,000 for a year of total raffles, that number is not giving them everything they want. Then we could reevaluate and like said previously, is it can always be amended.
I don't know that you have to put the year limit on it, but I would put the individual...
I don't know if by statute we have to have a year limit or not.
I don't know, Jim, I'm not sure.
No, let's see, I would want to look at that, I don't think, single calendar year. I didn't read that statute that fearfully, I thought that you guys had decided on that.
Well, here's my recommendation, here's my recommendation. Let's go 255. Let's go 255 to start. And then if it gets to the point where we get to the $150,000 mark, you know, then we can kind of sit down and talk about it. The board can always, at their next meeting, they can always amend the ordinance if we need to. We got to, I think we've got to have some kind of a limit.
Well, could I suggest 500,000 instead of your 250,000?
You mean 500, 500?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason why I say that is, the likelihood of us exceeding this is, I don't think it's very limited. To have a $500,000 jackpot, we really have two funds now. The one that's for the jackpot and the one is for the Legion. So, we actually have a million dollars out there. But the only thing that really counts is, if I'm right here, is the $500,000 that the jackpot winner gets.
Correct.
How much do the tickets sell for?
They're six for $5.
Are we starting this?
What are your odds on this kind of a game? I don't understand.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Is that what it is?
Not even better than the state rate.
So, Steve, at a point...
Okay, so that's...
My question is...
This is stellar, you're putting in $500,000.
You're changing this and this.
They have a limit for $5,000.
What is this, the maximum price?
How much is Morris for? Morris is hired at $500.
They can be charged $250,000.
The maximum...
$5?
Yeah, but see, they don't care if they're progressive, they're not going to get there.
I don't know.
So, some locations sell...
I still do just the $5,000.
I mean, I was thinking, because...
I think we're going to be paid out too soon.
I want to get to $500,000.
So, with the changes, with the changes, section...
113.
113, 135, A and B were changing to 500,000. And then 113, 137 deleting the last sentence in A.
All right.
All right?
Can I propose that they get the $500,000, the village gets the beer concession?
So, with those, with those changes, a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-26 and ordinance amending Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 113 Amusements, Entertainment and Gatherings of the Piattone Village Code Regarding Raffles.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Heck, seconded by Trustee Maravka.
I'll read the topic sometime.
Thank you.
Rick, I hope to see you back.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Ms. Maravka?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Would you spell your last name for me, please?
It is O-L-A-M-O-W-S-K-I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know what the...
We'll be knocking it out of the way.
So, I can use this as my template?
I bought a bunch of trash tickets a couple years ago and they didn't go to the thing and they called me up and I said, you want to do it?
Well, you know, the Cash Bash is coming.
Okay, thank you.
Let's get back to business. Item D, approve hiring Nicholas Kovar as part-time police officer, Chief?
Let me find my notes, other than, we're going to have a raffle by hiring police officers. I just asked for the board action to consider hiring Nicholas Kovar as a part-time police officer upon passing of the state power test and then he could be enrolled in the, it's a nine-month program for part-time officers because it's $600 now by the statute.
Is he, any experience in the police?
He's kind of got a couple favors for us. I mean, he's helped us on some things. He's a, he's finished his degree at Governor of State in Criminal Justice and he works for the Park District and he went to school here, he's a Boy Scout Eagle. I mean, he's been a football coach out there, so Nicholas is a good young man. I hate to refer to the KID because I am OLD. So, and he just turned 21 and I remember being that age, so he's, I think he's a sharp kid. I said kid, young man.
Yeah, he's a young man. Motion to approve hiring Nicholas Kovar as part-time police officer with the stipulations set forth by the chief.
What motion?
Second. Effective date?
Effective date, Chief?
We may get today.
Motion by...
Or tomorrow?
Tomorrow's good. Motion by Trustee Maravka, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Ms. Maravka?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Item D, appointments to Christmas Commission. The Christmas Commission's going to start back up next month, working on next year's event already, so that's, we've got a couple changes in the commission. Mike Jones will be the chair, continue to be the chair. Nancy Cross, Kami Cowgar, Rich Sheridan, Steve Stein, Angela Brandow, B-R-A-N-D-A-U, and me.
And me.
I've been drafted. So, but Mike will continue to chair the commission.
How Mike can tell you what to do?
Yes. A motion to approve the appointments. Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Bowden.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Ms. Maravka?
Yes.
Questions of the press? Anything else from the trustees?
Matt?
Yes, you may.
We did get the retail study back. It is in the hands of the people it needs to be in. I happened to run into one of them in their business establishment Friday. Mayor and I are going to be having a meeting with them hopefully next week with the involvement of people. And we're hoping this kicks it off, so...
Was positive?
Positive, very positive, yeah. He didn't anticipate seeing me at the establishment and I went up and said hello and he says, oh, I've been meaning to, you know, so he wants to have a meeting, which he asked for, which I have to take as a positive, so... So, hopefully, one of the things that I did here also is we have a housing component looking further west on the other side of 88th Avenue as a potential. So, that's why we've got to be real careful about this building materials ordinance too, so we don't drive away. So, okay? That's all I got right now.
Any updates on that issue with the grading and the house on that you live?
I don't think anything has happened there. I did talk to, well, Troy has talked to Bob Mathi, who's the engineer. And we told him what we wanted and they were going to get to that, but unfortunately, we had gotten six inches or five inches of snow right at that point. But as soon as they can get into it, they're going to move that back.
Okay, they've been told to...
And it needs to be built up actually more. Troy, when they kind of did the grades, they didn't stay within the grades. And I do know that engineer and he will follow the plan.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that got resolved.
Greg out there, can you just make sure that they do get the fabric and the catch basins, the two behind the house?
Anything else? If not, a motion to adjourn. Motion. Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Heck, seconded by Trustee March.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Maravka?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.